Welcome everyone to our March 27th School Board Meeting. If everyone would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, would you take a roll call please?
Mrs. Talby.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Detzl.
Here.
Mr. Heather.
Here.
Mr. Tietzort.
Here.
I'd like to start this meeting with a moment of silence for the children and staff that lost their lives in the senseless and heartbreaking school shooting today in Nashville. And I read our mission statement. The Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And our first business item is approving the agenda for tonight's meeting. I need a motion in a second.
So may.
Second.
Yes, it's five to zero.
Alright, so tonight we're starting with some celebratory news and presentations, and we're going to start with Andy Phelps, who is a curriculum supervisor, and Tim Kuning, who is a music teacher at Northwest High School. And we're honoring Mark Hensler, who is a retired music teacher from Pleasant Run Middle School, who recently earned a state award from the Ohio Middle Education Association. So we're excited to have Andy introduce our retired employee.
Thank you for having me up here. Tonight, we're here to honor Mark Hensler. Mark has gotten the highest honored recognition possible at the OMEA, which is the State Music Association, which is this distinguished service award. Even though our times didn't overlap in my responsibility, I was able to put out some feelers and have some people send me some things about Mark that I should acknowledge, and they were able to whittle it down to two pages. So hopefully, that tells you something about Mark's accomplishments with us. Mark spent his entire 36-year career teaching at Northwest Local Schools, primarily teaching at PRMS and Northwest High School, early in his career as a band director, then becoming the head band director in 1988. Mark taught beginning band at Welch Elementary several years as well. During his time at Pleasant Run Middle School, the middle school band earned 30 superior ratings at OMEA Educated Events, including 19 consecutive years of a superior rating. The Pleasant Run Middle School Band was also selected to perform at the 2014 OMEA Professional Conference. In addition, Mark would rehearse all 1,000-plus students and staff, culminating in a live outdoor performance. Just a few of his accomplishments with OMEA, just a few here. He was the District 14 Band Educated Events Chair and Host, District 14 President, OMEA Convention Properties Chair for several conferences. He was the OMEA State Secretary. Beginning in 2002, he was the PDC Conference Co-Chair and the Professional Development Conference Director for many years since 2014, which he has continued to this day. The conferences have been held since now in Columbus and Cleveland. He served as OMEA President-elect two years, President two years. He was in charge of the OMEA 75th Anniversary Conference and immediate past President for three years. Throughout these years, he worked with OMEA Board of Trustees to establish the OMEA Virtual PDC and related guidebooks and additional technology relating to their professional training conferences. He's been happily married to his wife Jenny since September 1st, 1984. A fun fact I have is that he was concerned about missing his first football game with the band for his rehearsal dinner. So that shows his dedication right there, his willingness to get in trouble at home for school. They have three children, Mark Jr., who's an architect in Columbus, Hannah, a business director in New York City, and Maddie, a senior at Kent State. Mark's also a collector of band music with over 900 band pieces at last count, band history books, 78 records, player piano rolls, radios, and among, that's just among many other musical memorabilia that he has. Each year Jenny relinquishes her dining room for Mark to organize and prepare for the OMEA Professional Development Conference, and has been a huge supporter of his with OMEA as well. Mark has been recognized by the community and continues to serve many different ways. He's the Director of the Ohio Military Band, which includes musicians from the age of 16 to 90. He's performed as a euphonium soloist for many different bands and brass ensembles, including the Cincinnati Wind Band, Cincinnati Brass Band, and also the Marcus Neiman Sousa Band. He's received the 2006 Northwest School District Educator of the Year Award, 2006 Educator of the Year for Hamilton County of the PTA, and 2004 Mount Healthy High School Alumni of the Year. He's also a member of the Ohio Free and Accepted Masons and Scottish Masons and the Sons of the American Revolution. He serves as a lay leader with technology support at St. Mark's United Methodist Church, and they said that's just about it. So, I don't know how he could have packed any more than that into there. I'm certainly honored and impressed by this, and I think he'd like to say just a few words as we wrap up this session.
I really appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and for the board arranging to recognize my honor here. I see a lot of my former colleagues, and I have great memories of my experiences here at Northwest. Northwest is always very supportive of the arts during my time here, and I'm happy to see that continuing, not just supportive of the teachers and the programs, but also within the community and the ability to use our facilities to host countless OMEA Educated Events, which I still think continues, perhaps with the Colrain Marching Band Invitational and some other things that are still going on today. This is, we're wrapping up Music in Our Schools Month now, and I know we have a lot of recognitions still yet to come tonight, but I encourage everyone to get their students involved in the music programs here, and I think it makes a tremendous impact on our students, and glad to see that we still have a terrific staff and such supportive board. So that's all I really had to say tonight, but thanks for that list. I've forgotten about half of those things that I had done there, but I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Hensler, one of the things that they didn't mention, that I'm like, I know it's in the list somewhere, Mr. Hensler actually, for, you're going to correct me, but probably about 20 years, took kids every single year to the Broadway series in Cincinnati to give them that experience of seeing a professional production. How many years in straight did you do that?
No, I think it was 20, 220.
I knew it was right around that, and that was just another commitment that you made to give our students an experience. So, on behalf of, you know, the district, I can't thank you enough for what you did while you were with us and continue to do for music education now that you're spreading your wings and doing even more. So, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
So, our next presentation that we're going to talk about tonight, Brenda's going to lead. Brenda's our Director of Curriculum, and we have, every year, Hamilton County Educational Service Center honors teachers in our region through an award called Celebrate Excellence. And so, we're going to tonight recognize all of our local teachers who were nominated for that, and the one teacher who is going to represent the district at the, at the Hamilton County Celebrate Excellence reception and our district award winner. So I'm going to turn it over to Brenda to introduce our amazing educators.
Alright, so this event that Mr. Yeater just introduced honors educators who have demonstrated excellence in their profession. Nominees for this award must exemplify the following qualities. They must have a high commitment towards student achievement. They must have the ability to challenge students at all levels. They must be seen by others as genuine, authentic, and sincere. They must be caring individuals who are thoughtful and who extend themselves to make a positive difference. They must show understanding of others. They must continue to improve personally and professionally, and then they must have other positive characteristics like being motivational for our students, supportive of our families, and enthusiastic and creative in the classroom. This year, we have the pleasure of having six nominees for this prestigious award. We've invited these teachers and their building administrators here this evening so that they can be recognized and celebrated. Each teacher and their principal will be invited up one at a time to the podium to be recognized, and we have a framed certificate as a small token of our appreciation for these nominees. Our first nominee is Jen Doole. Jen is unable to be with us this evening, but her principal, Mr. Brad Watkins, is here to share a few of the reasons why Ms. Doole was selected and nominated for this award.
Alright, thank you guys. Yeah, Jen couldn't be here this evening. She's just a tremendous asset to our community at Pleasant Run. The countless contributions that Mrs. Doole has given Pleasant Run Middle School community over the course of her three-decade career has helped make Pleasant Run Middle School a magical place. What makes Mrs. Doole a remarkable teacher is her ability to connect with her students and to create a learning environment that is both, that both supports and challenges her students. The results of her efforts are high-achieving, confident, and well-rounded students. Mrs. Doole not only makes her mark with our students, but our staff as well. She leads our math department, serving as our department's chairperson, and has been able to, and has been able to challenge and lead her peers in a manner that has allowed the department to meet various, the various challenges that come with a tested area, coupled with the challenges of a new curriculum adoption. Mrs. Doole's ability to connect with and work alongside her peers while moving the department forward has played, has played a critical role in the growth of our staff. Pleasant Run Middle School community is better for having Mrs. Doole be there. So, on behalf of Mrs. Doole, we'll accept this certificate, and I thank you for it.
Thank you.
Our second nominee is Ms. Lydia Bibb from Houston Early Learning Center. Principal Gina Sansone is here to introduce her.
Alright, it is a great honor to announce that Lydia Bibb has been selected to represent Houston Early Learning Center as the Celebrate Excellence nominee. It is safe to say that Lydia represents the true meaning of a compassionate, patient, and empathetic educator for our preschool students, and is exactly what many of our three-year-olds need during the early development, years of development. Her adaptability to meet her students where they are is, is admirable, sorry, admirable to say the least. Lydia has an optimistic outlook where she celebrates the positivity of each student and models the utmost respect and love to each of them as if they were her own. She artfully crafts how she celebrates students' strengths while also acknowledging their challenges. Lydia is committed, as her students' intervention specialist and lead teacher, to make progress towards their individual goals and knows when to push her students to their max potential. Her determination to sex, sissex, sissexfully, sorry, I'm super nervous. Sorry, it's a big crowd, I was not expecting this. Collaborate with her colleagues, including assistants, related service, therapists, and administration to ensure maximum student achievement is applicable. Lydia's character is authentic, sincere, and always professional. She comes to work to serve the students of Northwest community and sincerely wants her preschool students to succeed. She takes active leadership roles when she mentors others and leads individual, small group, and full staff meetings. Lydia is the definition of what an educator is, a person who helps others to achieve knowledge, competence, or virtue through the practice of teaching them. Thank you Lydia Bibb for being a teacher, but more importantly, for being one of ours.
Our third nominee this evening is Mr. Anthony Gaines from Northwest High School. Principal Nadia Hall is here to introduce him.
Dedicated, diligent, and caring are just a few words out of many that come to mind when reflecting on the characteristics that embody the type of educator that Mr. Gaines has proven himself to be. His authentic approach to teaching has made a profound impact on the lives of his students. One of his students described Mr. Gaines as caring, understanding, generous. He actually helps you. My writing has improved. He makes me more determined to do my work because he makes learning fun and we get to do group work. Our administrative team sincerely appreciates Mr. Gaines' support of all things student-centered. His willingness to seek continual feedback, his commitment to supporting both campus and district instructional initiatives in an effort to make his educational practices better for students is a testament of his dedication to the students of Northwest High School. He is a team player that gives both his talent and time for the purpose of holistic student excellence. Without further ado, please help me congratulate and celebrate Mr. Gaines for being the Northwest High School H-C-E-S-C Excellence nominee.
Alright, our next nominee is Ms. Sarah Thompson from White Oak Middle School. Mr. Mark Zimmerly is here this evening to introduce Sarah.
It's my honor to recommend Ms. Sarah Thompson for this award. I have some words here that were written by Mr. Gale. Ms. Thompson is an asset to the students, parents, and staff and community at White Oak Middle School. Mrs. Thompson started in the district in the mid-1990s and then taught at Northwest High School before coming to Walms, where she has been teaching since 2007. She's helped organize and run the White Oak Middle School Honor Society for many years, and she has also been a part of the building leadership team and is always willing to help while when needed. Mrs. Thompson is an accomplished student-centered teacher, and she truly exemplifies a belief that all students can learn. She has assisted in enabling students to achieve this each and every day. Her work shows respect for the dignity of each student and their parents. To ensure the best possible learning situation, she consistently goes above and beyond what is expected by filling the gap anytime she is needed. Mrs. Thompson has an excellent work ethic and models this day in and day out. She works hard to ensure all students and staff can perform at the highest level. She ensures that all details are taken care of and that she is well-prepared every day. She spends many hours working on curriculum lesson planning. In her planning, students are actively engaged in their learning, engaging in collaboration, investigating and making connections as they think critically. In addition, she plans and facilitates authentic learning opportunities for students, ensuring that the student experience is the best it can be. Mrs. Thompson is a lifelong learner, always striving to stay current with best practices in education. She seeks to improve her instruction and also that of her team members. The most important words I have here next are those from students. Mrs. Thompson deserves this award because she is nice but also strict, which is good for students. She thoroughly teaches us at a good pace so that we are well-prepared. She also offers extra help when the students are confused about the topic we are learning. Mrs. Thompson supports all of her students, and they don't, if they don't do something right, she kindly pushes them in the right direction. She also has a very good sense of humor and jokes around with us. Mrs. Thompson is always willing to help us, even when the shy kids are too scared to ask for help. She comes up to us to see if we need help. When a student doesn't understand something, even after she's explained it, she stays patient and explains it in many different ways to help us understand. Mrs. Thompson forces you to push yourself without making you feel bad about it. She holds students to high standards. Mrs. Thompson has proven to be a valuable asset to the White Oak Middle School, and it is therefore with great pleasure that she is recommended for this award. Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Alright, we've got two more. We'd like to next recognize Ms. Amy Meyer from Colrain Elementary School. Principal Colin Kleimer is here to introduce her.
It's with great honor that I am able to present this and nominate this individual, Ms. Amy Meyer. She has committed herself to raising student achievement. She's attended professional development to enhance her teaching both during the school year and in the summer. She progress monitors her students and plans lessons that meet their individual skill needs. Mrs. Meyer cares about the social-emotional well-being of her students and is in constant contact with parents for both positive and negative conversations. She's also presented teaching techniques to not only fellow staff members in the building, but also to the district leadership as well as the board. Mrs. Meyer is also a member of our building leadership team, which just happened this past year at Colrain Elementary. She's very passionate about her teaching. I've known this lady for a long time. She used to teach in the same building in Houston with my wife, and we actually attended our Leadership Academy with each other as well, as well as my assistant principal, Mrs. Helm. So, we actually had a conversation this evening, prior to coming over here, the growth that we've seen out of you, not only as an educator, but as a person and as a friend to both of us. So, we're very appreciative of you, passionate again about your teaching, and is a professional in every single thing that she does. So, thank you on behalf of Colrain Elementary.
Our final nominee this evening is Ms. Jenny Hay from Struble Elementary School. As Mr. Yeater indicated, we are only allowed to nominate one teacher for the district to send forward for this dinner, or this breakfast, I'm sorry, in May, and this award. Jenny was selected as a nominee who will represent the Northwest Local School District this year. Principal Karen Grayson is here to introduce Ms. Hay.
I'm Karen Grayson, and proudly serve as principal at Struble Elementary. And I thought, what better way to hear what an amazing teacher Ms. Hay is than by inviting a few of her students to share some of their thoughts? So, I'm going to invite them to go first, and then I'll pop in.
My name is Aiden. I go to Struble Elementary. I'm in fourth grade, and Ms. Hay is my teacher. One thing I like about Ms. Hay is she makes us all laugh. She, she gives us all funny nicknames and tells jokes. Another thing is, she's very perseverant, I think that's the word. But when the projector ball blew, she took us out into the fourth-grade pod and used the projector out there to teach us. And lastly, she helps, she helped me when I was struggling with a lesson, and I never would have got that lesson without Ms. Hay.
Hello and good evening. My name is Numerica Pariar, and I am a fourth-grade student, and I go to Struble Elementary. I am very excited to be a part of Ms. Hay's recognition, and some things I have to say about Ms. Hay are about how kind she is, how helpful she is, how caring she is, and she's unbiased. She's very passionate about her job. She is culturally diverse and inclusive. She sacrifices her family time to teach us, and Ms. Hay is overall an amazing teacher. I love being around Ms. Hay all the time, and I'll miss her once I graduate. My sincere appreciation for what you do for us.
I really should have gone first, because how do I even follow that? So, originally, when I submitted this, I wrote, "It's a great privilege to announce Ms. Jenny Hay as Struble Elementary's Celebrate Excellence nominee. Ms. Hay possesses the qualities that an administrator looks for in an educator, a strong knowledge of curriculum, exceptional classroom management, excellent rapport with students and parents, and solid communication skills. In the classroom, students find success because of Ms. Hay's dedication and interest in providing opportunities to allow her students to learn and grow. She is able to handle classroom discipline in a positive and appropriate manner by setting reasonable limits and providing redirection when needed." Needed, which is not very often. She serves as an excellent role model for students and takes an interest in each one of her students' lives. You can often find her on the sidelines at her students' extracurricular events. In the workplace, Ms. Hay is regarded as a team player. She collaborates with her grade level and contributes to the instructional planning and implementation of state standards. Outside of the classroom, she serves on our building leadership team, works on our yearbook committee, and participates in school activities and events. Ms. Hay is a valued member of our school family, and we are blessed to have her with us.
Just like to give a final round of applause to all six of our nominees.
Thank you.
Yeah, we are very excited about the nominees that we had, the collective excellence we have from our teaching staff, and the ability to recognize them tonight. And with that, we're actually going to continue recognizing excellence. We're going to go from recognizing staff excellence to recognizing student excellence, and we're going to have Mr. Garing, who's going to lead us through a recognition of our winter athletic and competitive musics.
Just a little bit of logistics, all of our recognition winners, our teachers, if you want to come down with your family, and step out there, we're just going to take you right outside. Now would be a great time to do that. You're welcome to come back in. We'll go ahead and unleash you when you're ready. While they're making their first move, we're going to have Pleasant Run Middle School students, go ahead and give me a line over here. Pleasant Run Middle School students, come on down and give me a line. It is exciting to be back with you, celebrating athletes once again. Tonight, we get to, and musicians as well, we get to celebrate musicians and athletes from mostly our winter season, our competitive groups. The way the evening's going to progress is we'll go through all five of our schools. The directors, principals, or whomever's coming up to give the awards will be here. Students will come up one by one and then circle back into line. Once this school is finished, we'll send the school on through. Once this school is finished, we'll send the school on through for handshakes all the way across and then they'll come back to bleachers. Parents, at the end of all five of our buildings, we'll bring everyone out the same door. They're going to be getting group pictures out here. You're welcome to join them or you're welcome to step up there because they'll be meeting you right back up at the top. That is up to you. That'll be at the end of all five of our buildings. So, that is the way we'll progress. So, once again, once you get your award, you'll step back in the line and then we'll send everybody around to the board. How about a big round of applause here for Pleasant Run Middle School?
All right. I get to come back up and before I turn things over to Dan, I get to brag on our coach for a minute. So, I got, I've been, I've been a part of this district for eight years, eight proud years. I started off as an athletic director at Northwest High School. My first year, Coach Argentati led that team to their, I believe at that point, their third consecutive SWAC championship. And a big part of that was Coach Kobe Brown. Kobe had, was over a thousand points. All the, all the fun things that he did on the court was amazing. And our assistant coach, actually, I don't think Kyler's here, Coach Famble was a teammate of Kobe's. I say this because there was no question that Kobe and Kyler were going to be successful. The minute I got on that campus, those guys were leaders on the court, leaders in the classroom. Kobe's a straight A kid. He's a straight A adult. And I'm so proud and honored that he gets, he and Kyler get to lead these, these guys on the court because they're teaching them far more than just basketball. They're doing all the right things and they're products of Northwest Local Schools and Northwest High School. And I'm so proud that they're a part of us and Knights again. So, with all the success that we're getting ready to celebrate, I just wanted to give a shout out to our coaching staff. Would you please help me give those guys a round of applause? All right. Now I get to turn it over to the, the true leader of Pleasant Run Middle School, Mr. Dan Horton.
Thank you so much. I am so honored to be here this evening and so honored to introduce you to our coach this year, who was, as Brad said, he was a former Pleasant Run Middle School student. He went from Pleasant Run Middle School to Northwest High School. Then he pursued a college career and became at Northern Kentucky Northern Christian School, got a degree there in accounting, and then he came back home. He came to us and what he's doing now is, which we're so appreciative of him and for Kyle, they're giving back. And we can't say enough about that, about the young men and young women that go through our programs at Northwest and pursue a career and then come back and give back to the students that we have presently, no other than Mr. Coach Kobe Brown.
I'll start by introducing some of our guys real quick. So, first we got Chandis Donald. Next, we got Carson Foss. Next, we got Zeontae Smoot. Next, Isaiah Wallace. And Kyron Session. We got some of our other players who couldn't make it tonight but also had a great season. Javion Jackson, Jalen Murph, Chris Walker, Kingston Williams, Sterling Willis, and Dylan Grant and Bryce Fuller. That's our whole team. Yes, it was a, it was a long season. We did, we, these guys, they persevered through, they came, they worked hard. They were scholar athletes. They took care of, they took care of their business and class. They took care, took care of it on, on the court and they came out and won a championship. So, um, thank you, fellas. It's been a great season and I also want to thank Pleasant Run for giving me the opportunity. I appreciate you guys and as well as the parents. You having the kids at practice every day and working with me and communicating just about everything. So, I appreciate the opportunity to coach y'all, boys, and I'm grateful. Thank you.
If we can have White Oak Middle School form a lineup over here. All White Oak Middle School recognition students, directors, coaches, give me a line. All right, with that being said, how about a big round of applause for White Oak Middle School?
Mark Zimmerly, interim principal at White Oak Middle School. While I'm new to the role, I, I just want to say that it's been an honor to get to know our orchestra teacher, Mr. Dave Nelson. He's going to say some words here in a moment, but I just wanted to take a moment and say very proud of our students and what they were able to accomplish at OMEA. And I will go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Dave Nelson.
Hi, my name is Dave Nelson and I'm the orchestra director at White Oak Middle School. I'm here to recognize six White Oak Orchestra students that participated in the OMEA District 14 Honor Orchestra on Friday and Saturday, January 13th and 14th. These students had the opportunity to rehearse and perform with roughly 70 of the best junior high orchestra students in the greater Cincinnati area. They did an incredible job representing themselves, the White Oak Orchestra program, and White Oak Middle School as a whole. The first several students that I name were not able to be at tonight's meeting and then the following students' names will be here to be recognized and they'll come up and receive their certificates. The first three students couldn't be here tonight and that is 7th grade bassist Jada Jawara, 7th grade violinist Larissa Nelson, and 8th grade violinist Emily Soak. Let's give them a round of applause real quick. And the three students we have here tonight, 8th grade violinist Colette and Gessen, 7th grade violist Olivia Pegram, and 7th grade violist Arden Wilkerson.
If we can have Colrain Middle School students line up for me. Without further ado, how about a big round of applause for Colrain Middle School?
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Ali Moore, the principal of Colrain Middle School. I just want to thank you for celebrating not only your staff but your students and doing it here in our house. I want to, before I get started, I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Case, orchestra teacher. She came to me two years ago and talked about how much she wanted to grow this, this orchestra program. And I said, "Have at it." I mean, she's going to different schools and trying to recruit, recruit kids and doing tryout nights and, and all types of things to, to give students the experience of playing in orchestra. And this is just, just an example of the fruits of her, of her hard work. But Mrs. Case, I want to say thank you for everything that you've done for us.
It's a pleasure to teach orchestra. I was at the elementary earlier on and I've been really lucky to come to Colrain Middle School. I've enjoyed my time here. The honors orchestra is a select group of people. It's usually a very small group and we take those kids and go over to Princeton with sheet music that they've only had a small amount of time to practice. They have a new conductor with a bunch of other people that they don't know and hope that they can keep up. And our students were really great. They grew leaps and bounds on the sheet music that they had. It was quite difficult and the concert was lovely. So, now we're going to introduce the people who are nominated. Andrew Williams. And our fourth stylist was not able to be here tonight.
If we can have our Northwest High School Knights line up for me, please. How about a big round of applause for Northwest High School?
Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. My name is Chad Countenback. I'm the athletic director at Northwest High School. I'm going to take a different path here and let the coaches do the bragging and the, and the talking on the kids. First in line here, I'm going to hand it over to our head wrestling coach, Coach Ron
Thank you, guys, for having us tonight. I'd like to introduce my staff first because this is not a me thing. I couldn't do this without my staff. I feel like I got the best staff in the city. So, start out with Shane Bastin. Coach Sean Gillian. Former previous wrestler of ours last year and state qualifier Kamari Harden. I just want to take a minute and introduce our two state qualifiers. The first one I want to introduce to you guys is Jabril Bradford. Just want to brag on him for a second. So, really Jabril was a first-year varsity wrestler this year. He wrestled last year JV behind a state qualifier, Kamari's brother, Makari, last year. And he wrestled him off every week in the wrestling room. And I mean, it was wild, but he wasn't a varsity wrestler. And this year he worked his butt off and for both of these kids, just to make it to state, it's a feat in itself. You're one of 16 in the state of Ohio for Division 1. That's something. So, Jabril Bradford. And I got so many more kids that I could brag on and the coaching staff. Like I said, I, I couldn't do this without them. We're on the same page. I am blessed to be able to do what I love from our administrators, our athletic department, you guys, to be able to do what we love with my friends. So, this is awesome what we got going here at Northwest and can't wait to keep doing it. The next person I want to introduce that I could talk about all day as well is Olivia Gillian, but I'm going to let her dad talk about her.
So, I've been a coach for 22 years. I've coached a lot of state qualifiers in wrestling and some state champions in track and field and I'm going to cry again. So, I want to say thank you to all of these guys, Mr. Colton Bach, Ms. Hall, everyone for giving me the opportunity to coach my own kid to the state tournament this year. I don't know that I've ever had a feeling like that. She is amazing. She works hard. Really, again, both of these wrestlers are new wrestlers. She was out last year, was her first year, and she was injured the whole year. You know, Jabril was stuck behind a state qualifier last year. So, the fact that these two came so far this year was just a testament to everybody that's standing here and all the guys who didn't make it here today too. So, thank you for letting me say something. Thank you for giving me the best moment of my career and thank you for letting me.
I got one last thing to say and I probably left a whole bunch of other stuff out too, but I do want to make note that we did make history this year. Olivia did make history, the first girl in Northwest history to qualify for the state tournament. Let's give it up for her one time.
Okay, next I'd like to bring up our SWAC conference champions, boys basketball and Coach Argentati.
Hi, thanks for having us. We're going to recognize some of our SWAC all-league players that are here tonight. We have Bryce Bibbs, who was second-team all-league. Nate Love was also second-team all-league. And then we have a couple guys who are all-league who are not here tonight. Diego Yun was also second-team all-league and Braden Miller was first-team all-league And then as Chad said, we did, we were conference co-champions this year, so I do want to recognize the other members of our team who were part of that championship. Julius Gates, Michael Humans, TJ Griffin, Desai Bronson, AJ Goines, Isaiah Beck, Travante Thomas, Jackson Callaway, and Carter Berg. And then also my coaching staff, lucky to have them, Logan Schroder, Jason Wilsonholm, and my varsity assistant who I can't say enough about was a teacher at Northwest and coach at Northwest years ago and is now back, Donnie Gillespie. We're really lucky to have him.
Coach Moore is not here with our girls basketball program tonight, but I would like to recognize Lauren Brown. She was second-team all-conference as a freshman. Great player. We expect big things out of her. If any of you ever have an opportunity to come and watch a girls' game, you're going to leave very impressed with this young lady, Ms. Lauren Brown. Last, I'm going to bring up our SWAC championship bowling team. We also had the Bowler of the Year in the conference and we also had the Coach of the Year. So, great year for our bowling team, Coach Terrence Johnson.
Thank you. I would like to thank you, guys, for letting us be here this evening. I want to recognize first-team and second-team bowling team. This was a good year for us, but the other years was good too, but the boys finished 18-1. And I think we have a good bowling program here at Northwest and I thank you for letting me coach here. For the girls, first-team SWAC, Emma Woodall. First-team and high average in the SWAC, Haley Goodman. Boys, first-team, Nathan Gross. Second-team, Elias Anderson. Don't think he's here, but let's give him a hand. And Bowler of the Year, just bringing tears to my eyes because of my son. Bowler of the Year, first-team all with 2, 27 average, TJ Johnson Jr. Once again, I'd like to thank you and there are other people that, for the boys that I want to recognize, Kyle Jackson, EJ Walker Jr. It was a good season. Next year is going to be better. We're going to state.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
He had 2 300s at each.
All right, last but certainly not least, let's have a big round of applause for Corin All right, thank you everybody for coming out. Thank you to the board for having us tonight and Dustin for organizing this. So, tonight we have eight of our winner teams that will be here that we're going to recognize. Winter season was very good at Corin High School. We sent six student athletes to state to represent Northwest Local School District and Corin High School. So, very strong winner for Corin. Our first team will be Tyler Henley, chess team.
Yeah, so before I begin, I'd like to point out the irony of me standing right here. We're here for the athletic and music award ceremony this evening. We're not a music program, so we must be a varsity sport. So, I'd like to recognize... So, I would like to take this... Thank you. So, I'd like to take this moment to recognize our two GMC second-team All-Conference members, Aiden French and... and Harrison Betcher. So, this is my first year getting to coach the team at Corin, and I learned far more from these two young men than they learned from me. I'm a better coach because of them, and I hope that they're better players because we got to have that relationship this season. So, thank you for giving me the chance to coach.
All right, up next, our academic quiz team, Coach Hurdle.
Good evening, board members, and good evening, members of the Corin community. If you don't know me, my name is Tristan Hurdle. I'm a science teacher at Corin High School, and this is my first year as the academic quiz team coach. I took over from the legendary John Dowling, which there are some very large shoes to fill, but I think we did our best this season. We were a small team of four students/players, but the standout among them was Mr. Corey Thornacraft, who unfortunately cannot be here with us this evening. But Corey was our team. He was the heart of it. He was the most active participant. He carried us through the season to a few victories here and there. But, this was his season. And I think, considering this is his senior year, this was a fantastic way to come to the end of it for him. And I thank him for all the work he has done, and I'll give this to him when I see him in class next time.
One thing to mention about Corey, he was the academic quiz team Athlete of the Year. So, it's a pretty big honor in the GMC and for Corey. Up next, we'll be swimming and Coach Stacy Tepe.
Hi, my name's Stacy Tepe. I've coached swimming at Corin for, I think, 12 or 13 years. I've had Lauren swimming since she was little, so I've watched her grow up in the school district. And I'd like to introduce my assistant coach, Kristy Williams, and thank her. Thank you guys for the opportunity. Lauren has received the first-team All-GMC award, and she is a four-time state qualifier. She will attend and swim at the Ohio State University in fall, and it's been an honor to coach her. She is a leader in her academics and in her athletics. And I just appreciate coaching her for the last, forever, since she was little.
Just one thing to point out with that, and again, there's a ton of amazing athletes, but to be a four-time state qualifier in swimming is a very, very big deal. So, Ohio State's going to get a very good one, and congratulations. Up next, who's going to do our men's and women's bowling?
I am not one for speeches, so we'll be making this pretty short and sweet. As many of you know, our home closed this year Corin Bowl, so we had to adapt fairly quickly, and we moved out to Harrison Bowl, which is quite a trek, but I think we all enjoyed our time there and they treated us pretty well. So, we have three incredible bowlers we'd like to nominate and recognize today. So, first off, we have Isabel Snyder. She's a first-team GMC All-Conference. She's our Bowler of the Year and our state qualifier. Next up, we have Josh Kirby, who also made first-team All-GMC. And last up, we have Johnny Tanner, also first-team All-GMC. Thank you.
All right, up next, boys basketball, Coach Scott Kerr.
Thank you all for having us here tonight. Want to recognize Corey Myrick, junior guard, was, come on, second-team All-League this year for us, which was quite an honor, really, really difficult to make first-team or second-team in the GMC 10-team league and only 10 guys on each team. So, really, really difficult. Corey was also selected for the District 16 All-Star Game. That'll be next Friday, two Fridays, April 7th, playing out at Indian Hills. So, Corey will get to do that with another one of our players, Gary Todd. But Corey, one of the leaders of our team, probably the most difficult guard in the GMC to stay in front of. I know a lot of other guys maybe put points up, but Corey gets in the paint pretty much whenever he wants, and I know I appreciate having him out there when I look as a coach.
All right, girls' basketball program, Coach Abby Meyer.
Hello. I had two girls make the GMC All-Conference team this year, and it be my first season. These two really helped me out throughout the year and were great role models for our program. So, first we have Kalia Johnson, who's a freshman, who ended up making second-team GMC All-Conference, which is a huge honor as a freshman, point guard averaging 10 points per game. And then second, we have our senior, Driya Steele. She received first-team GMC All-Conference honors, first-team District 16 honors, participated in the District 16 All-Star Game, and is participating in the Ohio vs. Kentucky All-Star Game. She also received a scholarship to Shawnee State University.
All right, wrestling, Coach Hunter Hampton.
Coach Hunter Hampton with wrestling. We had a great season. We ended up taking second place in the GMC, and we've got a lot of young guys coming back, so hopefully we get that championship next year. Now with us tonight is Dalton Gears. He was third-team All-GMC. He's currently playing baseball. GMC Champ Alorm Nevis. GMC Champ Jamir Carpenter. Second-team, so he took second place in GMC, DeMarco Cates. DeMarco was also a state alternate, so he came in fifth place at the district meet, and he was one match away from qualifying for the state tournament. DeMarco's only a freshman, and I believe he is the first freshman in Corin High School history to be a state alternate or state qualifier. So, he's got a lot of a bright future ahead of him, and hopefully be a three-time state GMC Champ Kaiser Kostoff. Kaiser was also a state alternate. We lost our match in overtime, so we're again right there. He's only a sophomore, so he's another one that's got a bright future for himself. GMC Champ Bryce Sears. And Bryce was also, sorry, Bryce was a state qualifier, and he's a two-time state qualifier. He's only a junior, so he gets to come back again and try and get on the podium next Overall, you know, we have a great team, great program, and we've got a bright future. I think our middle school program had the most kids we've probably had in 15 years, so hopefully we continue to grow and continue to see some kids getting awards.
All right, and then our last group is from our music department tonight, Blake Huffker and our choir.
Hello. This year, we had three students qualify for the All-State Choir. So, they auditioned for this back last spring. They learn a solo in a foreign language, a very challenging solo. They record it and audition to a panel of judges, and they were selected as the top 100 singers in the state, and they got to sing in Columbus for our state conference in February. So, I'm really proud of all their hard work. The first person who couldn't be here tonight, he's at a baseball game, is Brennan Green. And our second person is Riley Hay. And Lydia Manis.
All right, Corin High School, come on around, watch your step, won't you please?
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Families, we'll be sending all of our five secondary buildings' recognition students, recognized students, out this door. You're welcome to join them or go up and they'll meet you up, but they're going to come out for a picture right out here. You're welcome to come down or meet them up.
Thank you for watching. Congratulations. Good job, girls. Good job.
Good job. Congratulations. 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 Good job. Congratulations. See you back next year, right? Congratulations. 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 Is that? Okay, everybody's rolling now.
Yeah, there's some bus drivers in the back.
That was a lot of kids.
It's a lot. We have some talented kids and teachers. That emptied it out.
15 calling around the bus?
Just friends.
Sure, yeah.
Just as the students are leaving, just one more time, want to congratulate all of our students and coaches on a great season.
You can't hear the microphones.
They had to turn them down because it had such an echo.
Oh, because like when I was just talking, oh gosh, were these people going? Oh, gosh.
He said he was going to freak out.
I just, I crashed out when I was running first. I was in the chair, so I was guessing I just...
All right. So, we're going to move into our final presentation. This is about our transportation update. Want to first acknowledge all of the awards that we heard tonight, our incredible staff and our students and our coaching staff that support our kids. So, an incredible evening tonight to be part of the Northwest Local School District with all of these accomplishments. So, it's pretty amazing. Want to move into a topic tonight that has obviously been on everyone's mind, and so want to go through tonight, giving everyone an update of where we are. First, I want to talk about what we're going to talk about tonight. We have two topics we're going to dig a little bit into. The first one is the fact that on Friday, March 24th, we had to cancel our operations in Northwest local schools, and I'm going to talk about the factors that kind of led into that decision and what we're going to look at looking ahead so that doesn't happen again. And then we're going to finish the conversation we started about our short-term, intermediate, and long-term solutions for helping to mitigate our canceled routes as we move forward. So, first, what happened on Friday? On Friday, and prior to Friday, on Thursday, we have about 59 drivers in our department currently right now. We have six open routes, routes that are open, ready to run, but don't have a driver assigned to them because we are short that many drivers. As of about noon on Thursday, we had 20 of our 59 bus drivers who were out on Friday for a variety of approved reasons. And we know that typically from the day before to the morning of, there's anywhere from one to three additional call-offs that might happen for people who are sick overnight or have a sick child overnight. And so, at that point, we were looking at about 20 to 25 routes that were going to need to be canceled on Friday. I know that on social media, there's been a lot of buzz about how that happened. There is no evidence that that was an organized effort by anyone in our transportation department, and I just want to call that out. Social media's first word is "social," not "factual." So, want to make sure everybody aware that there was no organized effort from our department to disrupt operations. However, with that many routes on the books to be canceled on Friday, the impact would have looked like this. Currently, when we cancel six to eight routes, that's about two, maybe three routes per building. When you cancel two to three routes per building, it causes a disruption to operations. There are additional parents who are in the car line dropping off. We know from our previous presentations, we've talked about the number of students who miss schools because of a canceled route. With about 25 routes being canceled on Friday, that would have been about six to seven canceled routes per building. That triples what our buildings would normally see on a day with disrupted operations. Our current systems that we have in place would not be able to handle that amount of disruption. What I mean by that is that with our prolonged arrival and dismissal procedures, we would have had kids who were coming into the building from those, the arrival procedures, in an elongated fashion, we offer breakfast in that time period. That would have disrupted our food service operations because they would still be serving breakfast when they are typically transitioning to preparing for lunch, which would then delay our lunch operations. And the impact on the dismissal process, especially in elementary school, where you have more cars coming in, and it's not that you just release the kids and they find their car, but you literally are handing off the kid to the adult that they are coming to, that impact on those delays would have been significant and not something that we could have sustained. We did not have an advanced plan that we had communicated to our parents to say, in this kind of situation, we would do X, Y, or Z. And so, we didn't have that advanced communication for our parents to be prepared for an alternate plan. We have limited options in that moment. We could run our operations and stress our systems to the point that we are creating a situation that may not be completely safe for our operations. Our options were to cancel some... And so we didn't have that advanced communication for our parents to be prepared for an alternate plan. We have limited options in that moment. We could run our operations and stress our systems to the point that we are creating a situation that may not be completely safe for our operations. Our options were to cancel some schools or all schools. We also offer transportation at all of our buildings. We don't offer high school transportation, but we do have transportation between our two high schools for our students who are in the Butler Tech programs, who are assigned to Colrain as their home school, but attend a Butler Tech program at Northwest, or vice versa. And we have transportation for our students with disabilities at the high school. So all of our operations would have been impacted. We don't have the authority to cancel school for our non-public partners. And so we chose to cancel Northwest schools on Friday so that we could mitigate the disruption that was going to happen. We don't plan on doing that again in the future. So what options do we have? One option that we have is to continue to operate a modified schedule. Our goal is always to get every child to school every day. And based on some of our barriers and limitations that we've had this year, that has not been 100% successful. In a situation with that amount of absenteeism in our department, we would need to look at a way to stagger our routes in order to get everyone to school for at least a partial day. In order for us to run modified schedules, we would have some schools coming in late, some schools leaving early, and some doing a combination of both. That would allow our transportation department to take the remaining drivers that we have available, spread them out, and run a modified schedule. In order to do that, because we offer so many and are required to provide transportation to so many of our non-public partners, we have to actually work with them to run that because we can't change their time. We can't tell them, we're going to run this schedule. So we've actually been working with, and since Friday, communicating with our non-public partners to say, this is a situation we found ourselves in. This is an option we have to move forward so that we don't have to cancel any of operations for us or routes for them. They've, the ones that we've been able to get a hold of and explain this to have been extremely cooperative as a partner to say they will partner with us and allow their students to either come late or leave early. And that's just for their Northwest kids. So for a St. Eyes or a St. James, they would not be dismissing their entire school, but just the Northwest students. So we've been working with our non-public partners because that would be the option we would prefer to implement moving forward because it maintains some portion of a school day for everyone. Option two would be that we would do rolling building closures. So we would take all of our staff and we would take some of our schools and we would close them and shift our transportation staff to the other schools so that we could manage the operations for arrival and dismissal. That is not an ideal situation because we still have some schools that would not be open and some students who would not be in attendance. We believe that option one is feasible because of the partnership with our non-public partners and their cooperation with this plan. We are continuing to work with our transportation office, and I have Yolanda Palmer here, who's our transportation supervisor, who has been working enormous hours with her staff to try to put these plans together. And so we have a plan of what that would look like. We're continuing to tweak that with our non-public partners to make sure that all of the Is are dotted and Ts are crossed. And then after that is complete, we'll be able to share that out with our community because we want to make sure that on the front end, if we find ourselves in a situation like this again, everyone is aware of the plan and knows what to expect so that we can implement it with the least amount of interruptions as possible. So that plan will be coming out later this week, once we continue to finalize it with all of our non-public partners and iron out the details with our transportation department. I want to reiterate that this is only a plan for a situation where we are not able to run our operations because of excessive absenteeism. This has only happened once. We would hope that this was a once-in-a-lifetime event. We can't guarantee it, but we're going to put strategies in place to make sure that it doesn't happen again. So this is how we're going to continue to move forward with that absenteeism piece to make sure that we can control our variables and kids still get to school. The second topic that I'm gonna address tonight is our transportation options. At a previous board meeting and at some community information sessions, we talked about our short-term, intermediate, and long-term strategies. And obviously, with some open routes, we still are struggling with implementing and having success with those short-term and intermediate strategies. And we need to look at what our long-term strategy is going to be so that we can try to mitigate the number of routes that are being canceled on a daily basis. So previously, we shared, everyone knows our status quo. We also shared two options that would help us as we move forward to mitigate the number of canceled routes. One would be a change in our transportation policy that would move our transportation policy from a one-mile radius to a one-and-a-half to two-mile. We have talked about the implication that would have with the number of students who would not be eligible for transportation if that happened. The other change that we presented as a consideration is changing to a four-tier system where we would go from three tiers, our drivers driving three routes in the morning and three in the afternoon, to a four-tier system where they are driving four routes in the morning and four in the afternoon. That would change some of our start times to be later and some of our end times to be later. We actually put that out there, and then we opened up a feedback form so we could hear from our constituents about what they thought of the options. So once we put that out there, we ask for that feedback. I want to talk a little bit about our decision-making model and how we approach fair process in our decision-making. One of the things that we try to do is to have consistent engagement. Allowing people who are going to be impacted by a decision to be able to give their feedback and their voice so that it can be heard prior to a decision being made. That engagement is about people being able to share that with us. That is something that the people who are involved in making those decisions listen to and take into consideration prior to making a decision. Once a decision is made, it is explained, and we share the rationale for why the decision was made the way it was. And then we clarify, moving forward, based on that decision, how everyone who is impacted meets the expectation of that decision. This fair process is about giving every voice a space in the room, but it doesn't mean that everyone gets to make the decision. And if someone presented an idea and it wasn't taken, it was not because we did not listen, it was not because we did not read that comment, and it was not because we didn't take that comment seriously. It was because we listened to a variety of ideas, feedback, and we synthesized that into something that we could do moving forward. In some ways, it informs us about the impact our decision might have that we hadn't thought about yet, so we can try to mitigate the impact of that decision on people with situations that present themselves in those forms. So it gives us a lot of things to think about prior to making the decision, but gives us information about what we need to consider when a decision is made and how we support people that might be impacted by that decision. The form, I'm sorry, to get back to our options. Option one was the adjusting of the limit of one mile. Moving it out to one-and-a-half or to two would increase the number of students who are ineligible for transportation. Changing the four-tier, like I said, it would reduce the number of drivers we need so that it would match more what we have now in terms of a staff, but it would require some pretty drastic changes to some of our start times. And it would require that, again, our non-public partners are continuing to work with us to mitigate some of the impacts on their times. We did have over 400 responses, 441 to be exact. This shows you the breakdown. We did have most of the responses coming from our parents, about 61%. About 26% from our staff. We did have some parochial parents, community members. And we did have some students who put their voice in there, and we were excited to hear how that was gonna impact them and the things that they were thinking. And then other were people who self-identified as a grandparent or through, they had multiple lenses that they were trying to represent. So with that, our operations team, our leadership team, our building principals, read every single comment. Our board members read every single comment. They gave us feedback about their takeaways. Our principals, our leadership team, our transportation department. And so we really took all of that feedback to heart to really look at, how do we move forward in a way that really answers the call that we do something different and hopefully have a different response? And that we honor all of the ideas and impacts that our decisions are gonna have. So moving forward, we're going to maintain our three-tier system. We're not changing our policy, and we are not implementing a four-tier system with radical times changes for our schools. But we are not gonna do business as usual. We are going to make some changes to our three-tier option that will get us some of the same benefits we were looking for through some of the other options. One of the modifications is we're going to change our walking zone. I'm gonna explain a little bit of what that is. The state has maximum distances that students can walk to get to a bus stop. About a half a mile for secondary students and about a quarter of a mile for elementary. This change, where we increase that zone where students will walk to get to a bus stop, is going to do a couple of things. I'll explain why this makes a difference. I mentioned that we are six drivers short. That we are, part of our four-tier plan was to lessen the number of drivers that we need so it matches closer what we have currently. In doing this, currently our buses stop frequently. And at these frequent stops, they're picking up small numbers of children along the way. They have a given amount of time to run their route. When they are stopping frequently and picking up small numbers of kids at a time, by the time their route is done, the bus may not be full to capacity because they don't have time to keep going to get more kids. When we change this, they will stop less frequently but pick up more children, therefore filling the bus. That means I've been talking too long, right? So what this means, and this is actually a strategy that, this was actually a strategy that we were implementing with our transportation department about five or six years ago, but based on community feedback, we did not implement it. So this means that in a subdivision, a bus may not be coming down a cul-de-sac, picking up kids along the way and turning around at the bottom of the cul-de-sac. They will stop at the top of the cul-de-sac, and kids will have to come to the top of that street to pick up the bus to save time and pick up more kids at the same time. We will continue to maintain stops for safety reasons. So on roads where there are high traffic, mile-per-hour zones, congestion, or safety issues, we will continue to stop frequently and pick up our kids so that we maintain that safety. But where we can, we will space our bus stops out farther so that we can pick up more kids per stop, fill up our bus. This will change the number of drivers we need from this year to next year to be more in line with the number of drivers we currently have so that we can try to mitigate the number of canceled routes that we are having right now. I cannot guarantee that we will not have canceled routes next year, but with this strategy, we would hope that we would be able to have fewer canceled routes because we have enough staff. Another modification that we are looking at is modifying our elementary school day. We used to have a six-and-a-half-hour elementary day, which is consistent with what most other districts have. We extended our elementary school day to seven hours when we opened our new buildings in 2018. It did require some shifts in start times, and it did change some of our hours. This will take our elementaries down to about six hours and 40 minutes, which is more in line with the average. It will adjust some of our end times so that they're getting out earlier, which could help with our athletic routes that we're running and also with our elementary staff and their arrival dismissal processes and the planning time that they need in order to do the kinds of creative activities that were addressed earlier tonight when we acknowledged our staff. And then the last modification that we will look at is focused on that increased communication and predictability. We've heard from our community that if you're going to cancel routes, more predictability in that so that families can plan. We know that we cannot always meet that obligation because when we have additional call-offs in the morning, we have to do last-minute call-offs, last-minute cancellations. But continuing to focus on increasing a schedule that parents can be aware of and plan for, with hopefully the bonus being that we have enough drivers, we can cancel that cancellation and reinstate that route instead of going the opposite way. And then making sure that we continue to focus on our communication so that when buses are running late, that if it's more than 10 minutes late, parents are getting notified so they can be prepared when that bus is coming. So that communication is a real focus for us as well, so that parents are aware of what's going on. What does that look like? It means that we would need about 10 less drivers based on our current modeling. Of course, once you start putting the kids in the system and running that, it could look different. It could be a few less, it could be a few more, but that's the average we're looking at from this year to next year. It will space out some times. One of the other things we heard, especially on the north end, on Pippin Road, where we have Northwest High School, Pleasant Run Middle School, and Pleasant Run Elementary in a small area that are dismissing at about the same time. It creates a lot of congestion, and parents were struggling getting from one building to another to pick up kids. So we did make some adjustments to times in order to alleviate some of that congestion, and then obviously focusing on that communication piece. So what will this look like? This shows you on the right-hand side our current start and end times as of now for this year. The left shows you what we are predicting for next year. So our three middle schools will continue to be on one tier. They will shift to 7:15 to 2:05, so about five minutes earlier, but they're gonna get out at 2:05. Northwest High School and Colrain High School are currently 8:00 to 2:45. Same amount of hours, but shifting 15 minutes to 7:45 to 2:30. Struble and P R E will go to 8:05 to 2:45. That's a shift of five minutes on the beginning and then 15 on the end. Just to call out what I mentioned a few minutes ago, if you look at the Pleasant Run Middle School, Northwest High School, and P R E, that gives you that staggered time at the beginning, 7:15 to 8:05 to 7:45 for Pippin Road to clear from each of the different buildings and for parents to be able to get to each of those buildings. And then on the back end, 2:05, 2:30, and 2:45. So again, trying to alleviate some of the congestion and allow our parents time to get from one building to another if they have multiple children. And then Colrain, Elmontford Heights, and Taylor would go from 8:50 to 3:30, 20-minute difference on the end. And our Houston Early Learning Center would stay the same. So that is kind of the plan moving forward to address the cancellation that happened on Friday, so that does not happen again, and to mitigate some of the cancellations that are happening on a regular basis now so that next year, by implementing these changes to modify our three-tier system, that we are able to address that and hopefully get to a place where we are canceling fewer routes, if any. I'm not gonna guarantee it, but I'm hopeful. So that is where we plan on going, moving forward with transportation. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer for the board.
Yeah, what, thank you for that, that presentation. And I just, I also did read the 35 pages of feedback. So thank you to everyone that took the time to come to the meetings and to fill out that. How are we addressing that 34% of a department was out on a single day? That's a crazy number.
So we continue to monitor absences, and a lot of them were put in, in advance. They had different appointments. We do monitor that on a, on a basis. We do have different policies in place for different employee groups in terms of personal leave. So if more than a certain percent is out in a building or a department, we deny personal leave. And so then people are there because their leave has been denied. We don't deny sick leave.
And then the walk zone increase, would the parochial schools obviously go to the .25 with the elementary level because they have both?
Yeah, so the increase in our walking- Yeah, so the increase in our walking zones would apply to Northwest and parochial schools, any routes that we run, we would implement that, so that we could fill out, fill up our buses. And again, we would do that in neighborhoods where it's safe. I know the last time we tried to implement this, we did have some pushback that people were not in favor of that, because they felt it wasn't going to be safe. If there is a safety concern for a stop, because it's on Cheviot Road or Galbraith Road, we obviously would not be doing that.
Okay, so will there be a place for parents that would be affected by that, of who they could reach out to then?
Yeah, so we'll do what we've done in the past. One of the changes we made last year was that parents elect transportation if you qualify for it, so we can route for the people who are going to use it. That form will still come out, and we are going to need to really reinforce for parents to make sure they fill that out. And every year, we ask our parents to update their information. That information is really important, because as phone numbers change, emails change, if we don't have the correct information on file, our systems can't communicate. And every time we push out information, we get reports back that say this number is not in service anymore, it couldn't be contacted, so we need to make sure that if you are having changes to numbers, that we are notified, so that we can keep that updated in our systems. And then, as we get closer to the fall and the routes are established, they'll get their bus passes. We actually, in the meantime, once we establish the routes, our transportation department and our drivers, who know our roads like the back of their hand, will be able to give feedback to the transportation department about, hey, this stop may not be, may not work, we need to think about that. So we'll rely on our experts in the department to give us feedback on the routes they know and the stops they know now.
Daryl, with the driver shortage problem, that seems to be not only citywide, but probably statewide or even countrywide.
Nationally.
If you looked at any, any new ideas for recruiting people for next year, I know that, I mean, we're going to lose some, somebody's going to retire this year, we'll probably lose three or four, five. So if we're down into the forties, what are we going to do to replace them and build our numbers up, so we have adequate subs?
So we are always recruiting and hiring. In fact, on Friday, when the news hit the media that we had to cancel because we were struggling with lack of drivers, we actually had someone show up to the transportation department and say, hey, I have my CDL, can I drive? So we're connecting them to HR, so that they can try to get connected to a route. So, we are always looking to do that. We currently have five drivers in training, and two more that have just come in through application process, and so we are always trying to replenish that pool of drivers, plus build a subpool, because that's one of the key pieces. For our building staff, our teachers and aides in the building, we can get staff from consortiums, and they can kind of come in and help alleviate some of those shortages in the building. That can't happen for transportation, because they, they require a lot more, so you have to go through and have your CDL, your bus driver endorsement, your pass, your physical, they have a lot, your drug screening. There's a lot more steps to be qualified to drive a bus than there is to sub in a building. And so, getting enough people through that process, so we can build that subpool, is also something, because when our drivers are out, and there are reasons they need to be out, they have families, they have illnesses, they have situations they need to take care of, building that subpool that can backfill some of those vacancies is important for us as well. So we are continuing to do that. We actually are continuing to brainstorm things that we did this year, and some new ideas for next year that might help.
And you know, Daryl, people that are interested in getting their CDL, you can go right through Butler Tech, and it takes about five weeks, at least, to get the ball rolling, so you get your CDL license, and then to apply.
Our HR department has been at Butler Tech graduations to get people as they come off the stage, and we actually, we offer paid training in the district, so if someone doesn't have the CDL, but they're interested, you know, they just have to apply through our HR department, and we actually pay people while they're going through their training, getting their CDLs.
And Daryl, the age is eighteen or twenty-one, because I know they're talking about lowering police officer age to eighteen.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
We appreciate, through this entire process, the amount of engagement we've had. We've had a lot of topics that we've tried to ask for feedback from over the years, and this was a lot of engagement, more than we've seen for some of our other topics. My hope and my goal for our district is that the engagement that we've seen here is a starting point for continuing to be engaged, spreading that engagement, and getting more. Four hundred, when you think of a district of over eight thousand kids, isn't, isn't a lot, but it's more than we normally get, and so we're hopeful that as we continue to talk about big ideas and issues that are facing not just Northwest, but public education in general, that we continue to have the engagement of our public as we address issues and look for solutions, because our solutions that we come up with are better when we hear from more voices, so that we can address those on the front end, and not wait till the back end, when a decision is made, and then people tell us the impact it might have on them. So, the amount of engagement we've had has been refreshing, and we've enjoyed the fact that we've had robust conversations and the ability to address concerns on the front end.
I appreciate, you know, just taking the, the feedback and, and using that to build out another option that we can hopefully go with, and I, I think that communication and structure are going to be a, a huge piece to that for next year, just with the, the amount of feedback that we've received on those. I just, I, I do think we have to get to the root of why we would have thirty-four percent of people that are responsible for getting our kids to school to be out, because how do we, how do we avoid that from happening again? We have to understand what's going on there.
And we can look into that. Like we said, it was a perfect storm, we didn't have an organized effort, we
Oh, yes.
Did not, we denied personal leave that came in that day, because it was, there were too many. We've never seen this before, and so hopefully we will never see it again. But if we do, we are now prepared.
I'd just like to add, thank you for coming up with solutions for the next, the next year for transportation with the various modifications, and taking into consideration the option one and option two that was presented at a previous meeting, and all the, you know, the thirty-plus pages of feedback that we all read, and the trials and tribulations that parents would have to go through if we were to have gone with changing from one mile to two mile, or changing from three-tier to four-tier. But, you know, having said all that, to do something, you know, with the modifications, the one, two, and three that you suggested this evening, hopefully it's, clearly we can't continue to keep doing what we were doing this year, because it's not working, and we need to have kids in school, in classrooms, and hopefully with the three modifications, that that lessens or eliminates the need to cancel routes next year, so appreciate that, thank you.
So we, we definitely came into this process acknowledging that we could not do what we've always done, and so we appreciate that through the process, we heard the feedback that kind of pushed us back to the drawing board, and reviving an option that we had tried in the past that wasn't successful, but hopefully that was a different time with different circumstances, we're at a different time with new circumstances, and this, hopefully, will not only be successful, but people will understand why we're doing what we're doing.
I just want to jump on to something that Nicole had brought up.
I think this goes much deeper than this, because we have an absentee problem in our entire school district. We have an enorm- enormous amount of teachers that are out. You know, if we, you know, listening to you speak to how tedious all these layers of our operations are, and if one of them links is broken, our kids don't get educated. I mean, that's what it comes down to. So if we can't get kids here, we're never going to impact our academics. If we're not solving for X for why things are so stressful for our staff, or our bus drivers, or our educators, this, this problem isn't going to go away, and we're just going to keep throwing shots in the wind that this is hopefully resolved. I think this is something that's, we have to dig deeper. I mean, I, I believe our, our, like you said, Nicole, thirty-four percent, in a sense, that holds our district completely hostage, as to getting kids here. Our FMLA, when we go through these board meetings, our FMLA, and intermittent FMLA, is outrageously high, and there are those who legitimately have FMLA, I'm not saying, I'm not, and I'll probably get hate mail for saying that, but it is what it is, but then there are, I believe there are some that abuse that, because they want to take off whenever they want to take off. And everybody speaks that this is about children, this is about children, and with attendance issues like this, it's not about children. Like if it's about the children, you come to work, we need you to do your job, you're specialized, trained individuals, and that goes from the cafeteria to the bus lot, to educators, to our administration, to the board, everybody. Everybody has to do their job, and, you know, I, hopefully this is just a one-time perfect storm, but it's frustrating, and, and I do apologize to our community that we had to cancel service for their kids, their education, because we've talked many, many times, the best place for some kids with some of the homes that they grow up is at school, it's the safest, best place for them to be, and we took that away from them.
And we continue to work with all of our employee groups to address issues that come up through a collaborative process. We can't always, like with this process, and when I talk about fair process, fair process is about listening, getting that feedback, and making decisions that can be supported through an entire system. Sometimes it's frustrating, because people say we want X, and when we as a system can't deliver that, they feel like we're not listening. It is not that we are not listening, it is not that we are not responsive, but a lot of times, we have a large system. As a district, we have a big system that we're operating with a lot of moving parts, and one thing, like Mark said, can impact another. So, when we look at a lot of the comments, where people have a very personal impact and a personal story about how something's going to impact them, we take that to heart and we listen to it, but we can't always do what people want us to do to, about their personal situation. We have to do what's best for the system, even though we've listened to everyone and we are empathetic to their situation. So we have to listen, and so as we work with our employee groups, it's the same process. We continue to listen, we continue to engage, we can't always give what an employee group might want, but we're continuing to listen, work together, and try to come to solutions that can be supported and sustained on a large scale. And so that collaboration is continuing to work, we're actually meeting next week with our transportation leadership, and part of that conversation will be about strategies moving forward, about retention, and supports they might need.
And I do want to take a second to, Yolanda, thank you for all your hard work, and to our transportation department that shows up every single day, and is the shock absorber for those that don't routinely come to work, and everybody picks up extra routes and does what they do to get our kids to school. Thank you for doing that and being reliable for that. Yolanda, I, I tell Daryl all the time, I'm like, did you show up today? Because I can't even imagine the level of stress that you're under every single day. I really, I can't even fathom that.
Yolanda, and Brian, and Tanya, our leadership team in that department deserve a round of applause for what they do on a daily basis, starting at four-thirty AM, when they are responding to additional call-offs, splitting routes. Their first go-to is not to cancel a route, it is to figure out that puzzle of transportation to move kids to other buses to get as many kids to school. And the fact that we showed astronomical numbers of kids who have missed school because of canceled buses, that number would be much greater if it wasn't for the efforts of Yolanda, Brian, and Tanya in that department, trying to make sure they get as many kids to school as possible on a daily basis. All right, thank you.
Student achievement liaison report.
So what I have this evening is we have thirty-four Northwest Local School District middle school students heading to National BPA Conference. The following students will attend the 2023 BPA National Leadership Conference in Anaheim, California, on April twenty-sixth through thirtieth. The conference will bring together an estimated six thousand delegates from across the country to vie for top honors in business and informational technology skills competitions, attend leadership and professional development workshops, receive awards for community service activities, and elect BPA's 2023-2024 National Student Leadership Team. Congratulations to the following state BPA winners. From WAMs, we have Amaya Boggs, second place in word processing, Zach Young, second place in digital citizenship, Estao Mabodi, Jada Dewari, Janiya Dewari, second place in website design, Brooklyn Dykes, third in graphic design, Elena Dykes, fourth in graphic design, Riley Selmeier, second in prepared speech, Lincoln Ryan, David Gonzalez, Matthew Gold, first in digital game design. From Colrain Middle School, we have Ellie Lawson, Kylie Gears, Carly Derringer, first in website design team, Corey Gaskins, Quinn Lemon, third in presentation management team, Harlem Jackson, Justin Warren, Bailey Sparks, third in digital game design, Dylan Roberts, first in financial literacy, Dylan Strong, second in financial literacy, Axel Harris, third in digital citizenship. From Pleasant Run Middle School, we have Brayden Birkin, Brooklyn Aguano, Luke Kestha, Brayden Kersey, third in administrative support team, Darren Wilson, fourth in digital citizenship, Daniel Velazquez, fifth in digital citizenship, Tristan Samuelson, first in digital citizenship, Carrie Bryce, second in graphic design, Casey Thomas, first in human resource exploration, Jade Stargel, Shalina Tamang, third in video production team, Lydia Bishop, first in word Congratulations to all these students and their advisors, and good, good luck to them in Anaheim, California for national competitions come April. In addition, we also have, from Colrain High School, congratulations to Sina Bear for winning one of the Butler Tech Student of the Year Awards presented by the Colrain Chamber of And then congrats to the following students for winning at the state BPA competition. For the startup team, Isabella Lambrenidis, Chapin Newman, Olivia Burr, Jordan Selick, in Ethics and Professionalism, Sina Burr. Administrative support team, Madison Meyer, Madison Bradfish, Ashley Hybo, Elise Maynes. And congratulations to the following students for winning at the state DECA competition. Anna Maya Nevis, first in Principles of Hospitality, Isabella Lambrenidis, second in Restaurant and Food Service, Grace Gainer, fifth, place in Hotel and Lodging. Congratulations to Leila Klotz for winning at the state level reflections competition for her literature piece. From Colrain Elementary School, eight fifth-grade girls are involved in the Greater Cincinnati STEM Collaborative Education Project that involves working with a 3D printer. Mrs. John and Mrs. Darling are the sponsors of the team. Below is a list of students who are members of the team. Reagan Capel, Callie Clifford, Ariana Forte, Ivy Hension, Schweda Sabetti, Adrina Hostler, Reese Weitzel, Carolyn Phelan. And that's what I have, thank you.
Congratulations to all those students. Butler Tech update?
Yeah, I just have one thing. Last week I traveled to Washington DC for the policy seminar, and what, what that is, is, we go up there and we talk to our elected officials about putting money into the Perkins Funding, and Perkins Funding is what goes out to career tech across the country, and of course, we tried to get more money sent to Ohio, you know, so we go up there and we talk to the elected officials, and what, what they do is, the president puts a budget in for education, and only 1.9% of the money that goes out for education from the president's budget goes to career tech, which is ridiculously low. And we go up there and we try and say, hey, can you put some more money in, so we can offer more classes, more programs for our kids of our district? So, that's what we do for three days up there, and try and get extra money put in for career tech across the whole country. And Ohio gets the fifth-most amount of money in the country, because career tech is so big, big here. So, we actually went in and we met with the Deputy Assistant Secretary for the U.S. Department of Education, you know, you plead your case to them, and, you know, ask for them to see if they can go back and, you know, get more money put into the budget for education for career tech. We also called on Senator JD Vance, his office, and Senator Sherrod Brown, who are senators here in Ohio, and Warren Davidson, who is our new representative here in, in our school district, because he, he has, they changed the lines and stuff around, so we didn't have Shebbit anymore, so we have Warren Davidson, so we called on him, and he is a big, big proponent for career tech, so he's, he, he gets it, and then, so that's what we did for three days up in Washington DC, so. If anybody's got any questions, just see me or send me an email if you got any questions about it.
Thanks, Joe. Chris, anything on legislative? Chris, anything on legislative?
Nicole, just everything is in committee. Everything's been, I brought up some new bills that have been put forth, and it'll go through the committee process. Once it passes one house, then it has to go to the other. So nothing tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any reports from employee organizations tonight?
Not tonight.
We do have two community members coming to speak tonight. First, we have Dawn Howard. And just to remind you that while this is a public meeting and you can speak, we, as a board, do not respond, but we can get your information if you were requesting a call back. Each person gets three minutes. Dawn?
I was trying to come before the September. You guys always have to come. I can't take it here. So I have been in this school district for over thirty years. And I, as a parent, I've seen a lot of them. But the things that we're going to attention tonight, because I know this has been, and I didn't know this all was going on, I wouldn't have picked another day. It's the career tech. We were thinking on the review, looking at it, and then what I do is, all of the curriculum needs to be digital. The students all need to have digital access to that curriculum. I have a child who was a life condition, mental health condition, and she misses a lot of school. And she doesn't have the material. She doesn't learn. For two years, she tried to take a foreign language, and she's done lots halfway through because she doesn't have the curriculum to help support her on the things that she misses. So none of the teachers ever used digital copies of the curriculum. You're talking about students that are spending days in a class unit and everything. That should be available to all them so that the scares can stop them or help them, you know, from problems that they might have at home or that they keep in school. The other thing is, I addressed, I don't know how long ago it's been, maybe two months, I submitted a fully online request, and I've never heard anything in my response to that. No one ever got back with me, no one, my daughter's now been forced back out of her school because of the pandemic. And now that also brings her to the point where now she can't do her foreign language because it's not offered to her in the program that she's into. And that's not fair for her that she has to risk this foreign language component that she wants to do because she hasn't had the other issues and mental health issues. I feel like some students, not all their lives are completely spent, not all children fit that typical, they all have their own unique things, and all have to have some type of, have learning curves that they have to be able to adjust to. When I, numerous times when I went to the council office, I was shut down, saying, "No, that's not available. That's not an option. That's not an option." There are, my child is not the only one that has mental health issues in this school district, and has a hard time attending school because the rest of the kids that have other issues, physical issues, that I'm sure will get what they need to be given to, you know, to go off. But I feel like my child is being pushed in the corner, and that should not happen. So, and then on top of it, I keep hearing from the building, or a teacher, or this person, that my child is not part of the workforce any longer because it's in this special program. That's not fair. That's not true. When my, picking up this program, when I decided to go to this program because of her needs, I can't be saying that you can't be here, or you can't participate here because you're not your own. That's not right, that you're excluding people from that act.
Ms. Howard, we don't normally respond, but I would ask if you have a moment, if Dustin could meet with you now so we could get some more information, if you don't mind.
Second, we have Tiara Benton. You're welcome to come down here if you'd like, or stay up there. I should have said that to Dawn, too. Sorry.
I'm not a parent of the issue, but I'm proud of the transportation chair in the paper. I'm speaking about transportation issues tonight. I think we need to talk a lot about why, and you guys have turned about why, and why it's not coming in. I want to share a little part of that. Number one, it is kids. It just, that's the simplest fact. We are not getting the support we need from the building staff and the parents that came in and are going to be here. We had that, they pulled this here a couple of years ago, and we pulled it, that took a lot of us out for a long period of time, and the kids were out for a long period of time. And when they came back, it's like the rules no longer apply. The kids are very, um, required with the bus. And that's why we have cancer rights, because people don't want to come in to try and help get the rights. We can't control those kids. We don't know those kids. And when we try to afford it, either nothing is done, or it's the late point where another driver has to deal with the same issue, we're burnt out. And we're tired, and I'm just being honest with the drivers' perspective. I don't want to have to come in every day and, "Oh, well, you're not driving, you're trying to provide us," or, "We need to pick up so-and-so's kids because they decided not to come in." As a driver, I don't want to do that because I don't like it. And that's frustrating, and I just want to hear something like that, and expect to come in for a job and then kind of do somebody else's on top of it. So it's really, it really does start with the kids. I'm just being honest. These kids are disrespectful, some violent. When we tell them to stay in a place of safety, a lot of them that I've talked to don't even know what place of safety is. And I know some bus drivers are pretty good at teaching our kids what that is, but you get them running from the house, or down the street, or jumping out of cars. That's another thing that takes up our time, these drivers. It's not that we don't have the time, we have the time to go and pick up extra lives. We do. But because the kids that, you know, they're sitting at a stop or anywhere between one and five minutes, wait no kids to run down the street, or mom's in the car talking to the kids, or whatever. It's the kids. And a lot of drivers are just bad. It just is what it is. So I can't speak on why all the drivers were out riding. A lot of it is, and again, that goes to cancer rights. We're driving out to unknown kids, and we know our parents send their kids to school sick. We get sick, and it's not our problem. We do the best we can, trying to stay healthy so we can come in, but we're little kids that we don't have control over. It's just, that's the end of it. So that's just my point.
Thank you. That's all we have for community comments.
So for consent items tonight, we'll start with our HR items and work our way through.
We seek your consideration and approval for the following: seven resignation, two initial appointments, one change in status, and various supplemental items.
We have one donation from Turnkey Technology to the health pair. We also have several vendor contracts, three for the Colrain High School prom, one special education, one lawn care, and one for non-public school support.
We ask for your approval for the textbooks that were presented last meeting for information. We're asking for approval for grade six through ten English Language Arts. That adoption is with HMH or Into Literature, both print and digital. We also ask your approval for American Sign Language moving to the master ASL resource that we're currently using in our CCP ASL courses. We're also asking for your approval for field trips for the Colrain High School Band, Choir, and Orchestra to New York City. And this is actually for March of 2024, but they want to get started on fundraising. We're asking for your permission and your approval to take two of our students, Olivia Pegram, excuse me, and Evelyn Stein, to the Power of the Pen Competition at Ashland University in May. These two seventh-grade students have qualified and are in the top 15% of riders in our area.
With that, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Brenda, thanks to you and your team for being here tonight and having the books out there. I saw some people milling around. Could have been the cookies, but I saw some people looking at the books, too, so appreciate you guys doing that tonight. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Amy?
First, we have the methods of the regulator, beginning on March 13th. We have our financial report for the month of February. Our all-funds balance was 86.7 million. Our general fund unreserved balance was 52.3 million. Our revenues for the fiscal year to date are at 79.8 million or at 80%. Again, it's because we've gotten our first-half taxes, and our expenditures are at 60.2 million or at 62% for the year. Our investment-weighted average return is 3.05%, and we had our routine monthly bills as well as some student and staff software quarterly payments. We had some Colrain High School renovations to the old library and to the prior weight room. Workers' comp self-insurance fees, some audiovisual upgrades, the PAFR, and some auxiliary and grant fund payments. And then we also have our quarterly appropriation resolution. Our appropriations district-wide is $148 million for this year. With that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
Thank you, Amy. Motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Passes five to zero. Thank you, Amy.
So next, we have some items for information. We have multiple textbook adoptions that are on for information this time. So we have our French, AP Biology, AP Lit and Comp, AP Environmental Science, and AP Language and Composition. Those will all be back next time for approval. And then we also have on there various policy revisions that are on there for information this time, and will be back next time for approval for those. So if you have any questions about any of that, feel free to let me know. And then for tonight, I just want to obviously take a moment and continue to thank our transportation department for the work they've done to help prepare for the presentation tonight. Although I presented it, there were a lot of people behind the scenes who were making all of that a reality, and I appreciate Chris and Yolanda and their entire team for helping work out the details of a plan that hopefully we can move forward with and be in a better place next year. I also want to take a moment and thank the fact that we're at Colrain Middle School. We had some people who toured the building before our meeting tonight, and I really want to thank the admin team and the custodial team for helping set up and prepare for tonight. And then our technology department, Eric and Matt, were here tonight, helping make sure that all of this worked and that it was set up. So, you know, going offsite requires a lot of transition and other people to jump in and make this a success, and we really appreciate all of them who did that tonight so this could go off without a hitch. And then just to reiterate that Northwest will be on their spring break from April 7th to 14th. It is a much-needed spring break, and I hope that everyone, families and staff alike, can take the time to relax, rejuvenate, and do things for themselves that put them in a better place so that we can come back in mid-April and finish the year strong. So I wish everyone a happy, safe, and relaxing break.
Word and then their comments. Chris?
Nicole just wanted to thank all the parents, the athletes, and student participants, family members who came tonight. It was a long meeting for many of them to sit through, especially if they were at the end of the list. And also our tech staff for setting all this up. I can only imagine how hard that would be to bring all this equipment here. It's a lot of work. So thank you, and that is it.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, I'll second what Chris just said, and I wanted to congratulate Mark Hensler for his award. He's just, was a great teacher at Pleasant Run Middle, and all three of my kids had him, and he was just so helpful with them, and he did a very good job as a teacher when he was there, according to me, with my three kids. And then just want to thank all the kids that got the awards and that, and just wanted to call out to TJ Johnson, the bowler, averaged 227. And I don't know if people, I mean, I bowled for years and averaged 190, and I thought I was good, and this guy's got me by 40 pins a game. So it's just unbelievable, averaging 227 as a high school kid is just phenomenal, and just wanted to give him an extra shout-out. And then just wanted to thank Darryl for the transportation department update, and hopefully we won't have to worry about having to call school off. But appreciate everybody's help, Yolanda and your staff, and the bus drivers. Want to thank them. It's a tough job, I know. I wouldn't want to do it day in and day out. I couldn't, I couldn't do it, but I appreciate you guys, the work that you do. And then other than that, that's it.
Thank you. Matt?
Yes, I'd also like to congratulate Mark Hensler on his award and the other six teachers for the HCESC Celebrate Excellence Teacher. And good luck to Jenny Hay as our district representative to move on. And congratulations to all the student athletes and from music department, including chess and the academic quiz team that was here as well. And congratulations. And that's all I have for this evening. Thanks.
Thank you.
I love tonight. We look at so many awards and so many accolades to our kids. It's just, it's a testament to all the things that go on behind the scenes. You know, I also would just want to point out Lydia Bibb. We've heard her name several times in the last several meetings. She, I believe, is the one who started a parental engagement at Houston Elementary, which had great success, which, you know, it's them efforts like that that I think makes substantial difference in what we do. And thank you for the transportation, and thank you, Tiara, for coming and sharing that we can't fix anything we don't know about. So I appreciate that. That's all.
Yeah, I want to thank the, all the students and families that came tonight, and just recognize the amount of coaches and teachers that we have coaching these kids that were a product of our district. I think that's a really cool thing to see, people coming back to give back, and the parents that we're coaching, and just how hard the kids have all worked. The BPA students, just seeing how many at our middle school level and our high school level that are moving on is awesome. And apologize again to the community for the cancellation Friday. I appreciate that we're going to do everything we can and have another plan so that does not happen again. I appreciate...
I appreciate, you know, everyone that came and spoke tonight, and that we are, what, like Daryl said, we're able to take all of the feedback and come up with something that is best for the community and for the students and the families and the staff, that hopefully will be an outcome that will, will have less cancellations and get our kids to school, which is so important. So thank everyone. Motion, second, which we will adjourn to executive session after this, but when we do come back, there will be no further business to be discussed.
So the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the motion to move into executive session as listed.
So moved.
Second.